...levels in accordance with the most recent town compensation form. And the estimated increases fiscal year 2016, $12,529. Fiscal year 2017, $10,878. Fiscal year 2018, $11,155. Was recommended by the selectmen and the advisory budget committee by the Board of Representatives.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Second by Paul Poutier. All right, discussion. Yes, sir.
Can I ask you people why every year nobody can hear what you're saying? Every year you have the same problem. You have to speak over to the mic. And it will work a lot better. I can't hear what people are saying.
I'm not doing that. Okay, I'm not going to go up to my face. Sorry. Okay, discussion on Article Three. All right, here we go now. I will entertain the vote on Article Three. All those in favor of Article Three as written, then move. Show your cards. Thank your cards. Now, those opposed, show your cards. Uh, none, uh, no one on you. There. Two snaps. Okay, Article Four. I entertain the motion to pass Article Four. Hey, we have a motion to pass over Article Four by Mr. Bartlett, second. By Paul Poutier. Uh, those in favor of passing Article Four, show your cards. Thank you very much. Those opposed, show your cards. Okay, we'll move to Article Five.
Yes, Mr. Bartlett, Mr. Moderator. I have moved to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $825,000 for a road improvement program as generally illustrated below. You have Paradise Drive, uh, at $205,700. Martin Road at $162,000. Reading Lane at $144,000. High Eighth Road at $34,000. Lake Shore Drive at $53,345. Blake Road at $320,000. Bentley Drive at $8,356. Roads to be determined at $20,000. High Eighth Road, Lake Shore Drive Repair at $24,000. 2016, '17 Engineering at $76,500. And contingency of $66,079. And the note conclusion of any road or intersection on this list was based upon a condition assessment budget estimate here in the number of 2015. There's no guarantee of work being undertaken for on the identified roadway. Final construction decisions are made upon the acquisition of needed easements or rightable rights of way detailed in engineering and actual bids received, bids received, award deletions, and additions based upon the final bid. That was recommended by the Board of Selectmen five to zero and the advisory budget committee five to zero.
Okay, it's moved by, uh, Mr. Chip, seconded by Mr. Bartlett. Discussion. Mr. Wakefield. Are they both looking? Discussion. Seeing no one approaching the microphone, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, show me your cards. Thank you very much. Lower your cards. All those opposed, show your cards. All right, the passage is unanimous, Charles, Article Six.
The town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $655,700 for a program of capital improvements and expenditures and equipment as generally illustrated below. And B, meet said appropriation by withdrawal of $54,000 from the Public Works Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. $200,000 from the Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. $150,000, $1,700 from the unassigned fund balance as of December 31, 2015. And the balance of $130,000 accounted for taxation. Fire Department, replacement of Humper Engine Number Two for $400,000. DPW Highway fit up for a ten-wheel dump truck, $100,000. Police Department, portable message sign, $15,200. DPW Highway one-ton pickup with Plow and Sander, $54,000. DPW Facilities, ESP Energy Improvements, $30,000. Recreation Facility, Pathway Phase Three, $36,500. For a total of $635,700. And this was recommended unanimously by the Selectmen and the advisory budget committee.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Second by Mr. Bartlett. Discussion. Mr. Mudge.
Joe Mudge, 295 Austin, Mountwood. I have a couple of questions. One of which, what kind of a guarantee do we have that these are the items we're spending this money on and not buying anything else? This is one thing, I always felt very confident when the townspeople voted on this, this is what that money was going for. Last year, we had an extra $28,000 on something and we bought a ten-wheel dump truck, or ten-wheel, ten-wheel truck. And that's why we got $100,000 to opt in. Do I have any kind of a guarantee? And maybe each selectman could tell us whether they agree with this, what we're voting on, or if we have something in the back around arms.
Okay, the question's going to be the selectmen. So if you want to start with Mr. Bartlett.
I was on the capital improvements program committee. We had a ten-wheel dump truck planned and proposed in our long-range capital expenditure program. It, as I recall, was well over, I believe it was close to $200,000, $175,000. It came to our attention that a military surplus, ten-wheel, dump chassis was available at a very, very high price. It would need conversion to a dump truck, but it was a military-spec, very heavy-duty vehicle. We had the $28,000 that it was going to cost to purchase it. The capital improvements program committee thought that the logic behind doing that would be a very reasonable stewardship of the taxpayers' dollars. We have since bought that $28,000 dump chassis. We are in the process of converting it to a dump truck. We're going to end up with a very heavy-duty machine that is almost exactly the specification we want because we're controlling a lot of the specification for about $50,000 less than the one we had originally proposed. We thought this was a pretty good idea. As far as guarantees, Joel, there aren't any real guarantees. We don't know if another piece of equipment is going to break down when we need. We also don't know if a piece of equipment that we plan to replace might have another year or two left in it. I think that the current way that it's completely being managed is very bad. Thank you.
I don't know much I could add to that. I agree with what Josh just stated. Anytime we can save almost $50,000, I think it sounds, it is a good idea, although I agree with what Josh said.
Yes, a couple of other notes. We have, at the vote of selectmen in a public hearing, we have debated the revenue source on this. Uh, we considered, number one, our selectmen's discretion, I think, which would allow us to purchase that from one source and we wouldn't have to take it out of anyone's budget. Uh, we considered taking it out of the DPW budget and we also considered taking it out of the fund specifically for that purpose. Carol Grantfield, the town administrator, administrator at the time, vetted this group in the municipal and it was considered a legal process. So we chose to take it out of the fund for the purpose.
Mr. Chip.
I just wanted to add that, um, we didn't say we were going to buy something and then just go and buy something. And this is what happened was, is there were unexpendanted funds after we purchased all the things we said we would purchase. And I think that you know from being a selectman from out here is that it's common practice to use unexpendanted funds to meet future needs. And that's exactly what we did this year.
I'd also like to add, according from Attorney Buckley at the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which Carol Grantfield, if you can show to, I'm quoting here, said, "We're working for Article 12 approved at the 2015 town meeting, which included a listing, a highway payload for $185,000 was reviewed. And because the article was awarded for a program of capital improvements and expenditures and equipment as generally illustrated below, Attorney Buckley advised that it was a general enough so that those funds could be spent for equipment if the opportunity arose for purchase federal surplus equipment and savings for the town." And if you look at Article Six that was just read, it again says, "Generally, generally illustrated below."
Mr. Mudge. And you further.
Yes, as generally, as I remember, right, one of the reasons why that's got to go in there, because one year after we were going to buy a town or suburban, and then come time to buy it and nobody had one. So we wanted to see about getting a Ford Explorer or Expedition instead. And there was a lot of discussion, although we legally could do that because it was so stated in the town report that it was going to be a Chevy, I don't remember, suburban town. Also, yes, you might be saving $60,000, $80,000, but it's also a 2010, not a 2016. And when you get through with the rear ends and the front ends of it now, this packed all by itself. So if you have a problem with them, good luck. You're not going to get the cards. I'm hoping at least we will take this truck someplace before we step buying pieces and take it through some garage somewhere and have somebody check it out, make sure they believe it's worthy to put this in. You're talking about a truck that was overridden, I don't know, a rack over the nose. Guess it? God knows how much sand's gone through it. I think if you talk to anybody that used to be in the military, a lot of them vehicles were not taken care of the best. I'm not with a bunch of cowboy kids up on it and seeing how they can get them off the ground. I just, sometimes a good deal isn't always a good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Yes, sir.
Dave Cannon, Mindland, Mindland, Old Moulton Road.
Mr. Mudge.
This, this truck is almost half, twice the size of a regular ten-wheeler. There's not many places we're not, we're going to be able to use it. And the main goal for the higher part is to Moulton Road that. Well, we've got a lot of other roads in this town. I mean, we've got $130,000 that we have to spend for this truck. You don't have to put much more to buy a brand-new ten-wheeler, have it equipped, and have something of eight, 10 years. Because two or three years down the road, you're going to be coming back to the town and saying, "This truck has been all asleep. This truck doesn't have heat in it. It doesn't have a lighting. It doesn't have anything." So basically, wish that was nothing, $30,000. And you can buy a new one, a quid, for a little more money, a little bit of help in this. And like I said, should be able to keep it for ten years. You've got nobody that really wants to drive this truck. And maximum speed is probably 50, 55 miles an hour. So kind of, we spent money that not even thought about how this thing is going to operate or anything. To me, it's a waste of money.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Mr. Bartlett.
I have two comments on that. Number one, if it'll only go 50 or 55 miles an hour, I can't imagine why we'd want a ten-wheeler that needed to go any faster than 50 or 55 miles an hour in a town of Moulton, except in all those certain trucking companies that do come through the village at about that speed. The other, the other question is, Dave, I appreciate the expertise that you and a few other people have brought to the table here, but it is not the selectmen's policy, nor do I think it's sensible for this town meeting to be micromanaging a department head's decisions. We don't, we don't tell, well, I just think that we, if we trust our department heads to do the job, we let them do the job. If they don't do the job, then they shouldn't be working for us. Thank you.
Back here. Do you feel, okay? This truck should be able to go at handloads and call gravel, interhalf, whatever it needs. If you can't do 50, 55, and I've already heard the steering and the cruise shakes to 35 or 40, so that's more money that's going to be spent to get this correct. As Mr. Mudge said, by the time you take it somewhere, spend money and get people, somebody's opinion, it works, not a lot of times. It's like, well, we're spending those $10,000, $15,000 just to get this thing somewhat appropriately, you're going to be able to price it in the truck, don't worry. Just to clear up any of what the plan actually was for a ten-wheeler dump truck, so everybody has an understanding. We do not truck out products to and from our aggregate vendor. They're actually delivered under contract to our facility at the highway garage. A ten-wheeler dump truck could be utilized, basically within the town of Moulton Road to bring product to and from our different job sites we do. So instead of taking two dump trucks to a job site, we would be able to take one dump truck to the job site with that commodity. So if we're replacing a culvert or we're doing other types of work, it allows us to have a greater capacity in order to do that. It is true, the ten-wheeler dump truck would be utilized to plow Moulton Road and Neck Road and Long Island Road in the wintertime. That would be its primary function. And then at a secondary level, as we service to private owners within the community, the ten-wheeler dump truck would then come off of that route once it was up to conditions that were acceptable by the Public Works Director. And then from there, would then go into a sanding mode. We, after winter activities, we transfer over and staff to back up the private contractors. And so we would utilize a ten-wheeler dump truck to then go for an example of Swiss Veil, a subdivision of about 26 miles of road. We would then send that truck over there, take about two loads of, two, maybe two and a half loads, in order to sand the entire Swiss Veil community with that one dump truck. Of course, in a nice storm, we would do things a little bit differently, but in a general sense of maintenance, we would send that truck over to only make two trips to that neighborhood versus having to send four dump trucks, four of the smaller dump trucks over to do the same process for, we really can't do that lots of times. You only send two, they have to make repeated trips just to make a trip back and forth, for example, for reloading purposes, it takes a little over an hour in order to actually drive back empty, reload, and then drive back to the other side of town. So that's really the function that was established for the ten-wheeler dump truck. Many communities in the state of New Hampshire are actually taking and converting or adding a lot of their fleet to ten-wheeler dump trucks for efficiency purposes. And do realize, this is a 2010 Freightliner truck. It is, has 3,000 miles on it. It was actually purchased for $166,000 by the U.S. government and shipped over to Germany, where it actually had its service over there, all 3,000 miles. And the town of Washington, New Hampshire, this is a town that actually adverted me to this process. There's several other towns that have done the same. I believe Armstead is another community that has purchased either one or two of those trucks. And several other communities have done the same process. The town of Washington completely outfitted their truck. We sent staff over there to review it and look at it as a dump carload back to the thousand wings for that purpose. So that's, that's, that's what I can tell you in a nutshell. I certainly understand the folks concerned about the parts and what will be available. Certainly we'll have to look at that as a group forward.
Thank you, sir. Next to the microphone.
The only question I have now is, what does it take $500 to price a new truck? What we're going to have invested in this thing, which I said, within three years, we're going to be asking the town to replace it. And like I said, right now, there's a lot of things this truck doesn't have that you can have in your new truck. Please to let people have a look and go and drive it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
My name's Jim Hober, I'm from East Moulton Road. I pretty much disagree with Josh Hart about everything, but I totally agree with him on this issue. This, this micromanagement of whether we're going to take advantage of a military surplus dump truck being available, I sit at home and do nothing while you people on this board work your rear ends off to run this community. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Doc Marston, I just want to hear from you regarding to the fire truck. It says we listed that we have a $400,000 allocation. Is that an amount or are we going to sell the, we have some, there's a market for used fire trucks?
All right, anyone who may answer that question? Mr. Marston? Mr. Pinson is approaching the microphone.
David Banks and the fire chief here in town. The $400,000 is for a new truck. It is replacing a 35-year-old truck that we have. The trucks typically are sold for surpluses by the town, so it's for flood exhaustion. The value ranges can be anywhere. One of the trucks that we had out previously, we had a $12,000 for. So yes, there is a market for them. It just depends on what the current conditions are out there and what people are looking for.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mudge.
Just one more thing, and I'll just, before I get on this side.
What?
For this side.
Oh.
I have here a copy of the 2014 Public Works annual report for the town of Washington, New Hampshire. Their truck that they got, that we went over and looked at, was a 2010 Freightliner. They bought it for $3,500 and then took another $2,500 to get it shipped to them. They've gotten in all totals $40,000. Forty, because of what they had for equipment, and they scraped it off from out in the backyard. Forty dollars locked it within $128,000. That's, I just hope maybe somebody will have that couple of that and will step up in the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Mr. Wakefield.
Yes, Mr. Marston, it's Wakefield, the number 10's part still. I've got a question. I think I know the answer. I'm hearing about the problems with this dump truck, $50, 55 miles an hour. Can somebody tell me the speed limit on Moulton Road and Neck Road, Route 109, and all the town roads?
The speed limit is 35 and 40 on Moulton Road. It's been pointed out to me by staff. I don't know the speed limit on Old Neck Road. Does anyone know that or want to know? Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Kim, I bet you know the answer. There's, there's quite a variety of speed limits, but most town, town roads have 25 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour. Moulton Road, as Jerry mentioned, highest speed is 40 miles per hour, as it is on 109 South as well. Out on 171, the speed limit is what? To 50 miles per hour, up here. Just on a couple of clarification notes, the present, what I presented to the capital improvements committee in the initial 2014, on 2016, for the, for the ten-wheeler dump truck being a brand-new purchase, was in fact an estimate of $230,000 for a fully-equipped ten-wheeler dump truck. And Joel's, he's right, $40,000, $40,000 in town of Washington. They've got some very talented, talented individuals over there that did a great fabrication job. I know Jim Dave was here earlier, he was one of the folks that overlooked at it. Those guys did a nice job. And, you know, this is to actually put newer equipment onto that truck. I agree with Joel. It should be completely looked through and, and looked at before any of that actually the outfit is done, just to make sure that there isn't anything, sawdust in the rear end or anything like that in that situation here. But certainly, I think the, the idea was to reduce our costs and to be able to have a usable piece of equipment in a year-round fashion. We, our dump trucks, we have five, six-wheeler dump trucks. And in the summertime, we, our staff at the Public Works Department, they, they do other things other than just drive dump trucks. In the wintertime, they drive dump trucks above snow. So all of, all of our staff is actually out in a dump truck or some other kind of snow fighting vehicle. In the summertime, we have people who are assigned to drive graders, backhoes, other pieces of equipment, which take them away from driving dump trucks. So it's, it's an idea of trying to gain that efficiency. As far as somebody being able to drive the dump truck with, with the staff, we actually have everyone at the Public Works facility, just in fact licensed in order to drive such a dump truck. It is a automatic dump truck. So it makes it easier in that fashion. It has collision control on it, thanks to the U.S. military, which I was quite shocked to see. But it appears on the face of it, as we checked it out, it appears to be a good piece of equipment, but I, I value this to all budgets, comment, relative to making sure before we make an additional substantial investment, to check for a rental which will. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Todd Lombardo.
Just a question, I can believe someone's here.
Todd Lombardo.
Hey, Todd.
A little close to that. I have two questions. One is that, or a statement to say, I understand what you're saying and that, you know, a lot of this truck is strapped into the local town vehicles and that would be inconvenient when we go and replace or grounds or things like that, the tire size. So that's a inconvenience and a stress for the town buying stuff like this. And the second thing is that, is this included on this Article Six? Would it not, I think, to call this, you know, Article Six? That would be.
Okay. Yes, this is included on Article Six and you may call the question.
Yes, I would like.
All right. We have called the question. All those in favor of calling the question, show me your cards. Thank you. Lower your cards. Those opposed. All right, the question has been called. All those in favor of Article Six as presented, show me your cards. All right, thank you. All those opposed to Article Six, show me your cards. Only a few. All right, thank you very much. We'll move to Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bartlett.
I'd like to move Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to, A, raise an appropriate sum of $175,000 for a program of capital improvements and expenditures and equipment as generally illustrated below, and B, meet said appropriation by a withdrawal of $175,000 from the municipal building capital reserve fund. DPW Facilities parking, Public Safety Building parking lot repairs, $175,000. About half the project that we have planned this year. This was recommended by the selectmen five to zero and recommended by the required committee by the zero.
Okay, move, Mr. Bartlett, seconded by Mr. Poutier. Motion on the floor for number seven, Article Seven, discussion. Seeing no one approaching the microphone to discuss this article, I'll be a vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, show me your cards. Thank you very much. Lower your cards. Any opposed to Article Seven? And we have one in opposition. Okay, move to Article Eight, please.
Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Pink.
I'd like to move Article Eight.
I'd like to move Article 8 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of and to deposit the same in the following capital reserve funds and meet the said appropriation by using $251,500 from the unassigned fund balance as of December 31, 2015, and the balance of $275,000 come from taxation. And the reserve funds affected are Communications Technology Capital Reserve Fund, $27,500; Reappraisal Capital Fund, $24,000; Firefighting Equipment Capital Fund, $110,000; DPW Equipment Capital Fund, $160,000; Municipal Building and Facilities Fund, $200,000. A total of $521,500. This article was recommended by the Selectman and a vote of five yes, zero no, and also the Advisory Budget Committee, five yes, zero no.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Beal, second. By Mr. Bartlett, discussion. Anyone approaching the microphone? And I see none, so I'll call the question on Article 8. All those in favor of Article 8 as moved, show your cards. Thank you so much. Show your cards. Who opposed Article 8? Show your cards. And that looks like one opposed. Thank you. Now we go to Article 9.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 9 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $227,700 and to deposit the same into the following expendable trust bonds. New Oil, $225,000, and Lee's Mills, $2,700. A total of $227,700. This was recommended by both the Selectman and the Advisory Budget Committee, 7 to 5 to 0.
Okay, moved by Mr. Ship. Seconded by Mr. James Beal. Discussion. Seeing no one approaching the microphone, I'll call the question on Article 9. All those in favor of Article 9, show your cards. Thank you very much. Those opposed, show your cards. And only one opposed. Thank you, sir. Article 10. All right, I get the good one. See if the town will vote to raise, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate subject to any and all changes made at this meeting, the sum of $7,594,327 to pay the expense of general government, public safety, public works, including highways, cemeteries, buildings and grounds, and transfer station, human services, visiting service, culture and recreation, and development services. This was recommended by both the Selectman and the Advisory Budget Committee by 5 to 0. So, moved by Mr. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Pontier. All right, we have Article 10, $7.594,000. Discussion. Fascinating. You know, I thought this was gonna be one of the longest meetings of my life here, but it looks like you guys are cool in here. All those in favor of Article 9, I'm sorry, Article 10. Well, I'm giving this job up. Article 10. Show me your cards. Very good. Opposed Article 10. Show your cards. And while that one's announced, all right. How quickly that happens. Article 11. Uh, here's somebody. Yes, oh, Article 11, come on. That's what the hell is.
Sorry, quickly, Chairperson of Library Board of Trustees, on the left of the coin road. I'd like to move Article 11 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $536,241 to pay the expense of operating the public library.
That's recommended by the Selectman 5 to 0, the Advisory Budget Committee 5 to 0, and I hear a second from Mr. Pontier.
I'll just second that.
So, discussion.
Before the discussion, may I make a few remarks?
You're seconded.
Thank you. On behalf of the Library Board of Trustees, I'd like to take this time to recognize a longtime Library Trustee who has just finished up her eighth term. Barbara Shepherd has served on the board since 1992. In her 24 years of service, she held positions of trainer and library representative to the APC. Barbara has been a tireless advocate and supporter of the library. Her dedication and commitment have greatly benefited our library. Prior to serving as trustee, Barbara belonged to the Friends of the Library starting in 1986. Combined, that is three decades of service. Barbara is an incredible volunteer. The Board of Trustees greatly appreciates Barbara's many contributions and thanks her for her service. She's seated right behind me. Let's have a round of applause.
I don't really mind very much.
Okay, thank you. That was well deserved recognition for Barbara. As far as Article 11 it goes, it's a request to fund the operation of the library. The library continues to be an important part of the Mulberry community. It is not just a collection of educational resources, but also a significant gathering place demonstrated by the popularities and use of our program. The Board of Trustees appreciates the community's support for the library over the years and ask that you vote favorable on this article. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing no one approaching the microphone, I'll ask for your... Whoa, 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 wait.
Jim McNeil from Bonn, Oregon.
Thank you, sir.
I have to say something about this library. I've lived around all of the country. That is the finest library I've ever come across. And those women do an unbelievable job. I love the place. And that dog, I love that dog. But thank you so much. It's really, the older generation really appreciates that library. Thank you.
Next, anyone else? All right, seeing no one else approach, now I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 11, show me your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed to Article 11, show your cards. And it is your now, my source, Article 12. Yeah, we got about another minute and the ballot box will be closed. So, we'll go to Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 12 to see if the town will vote to establish a Townwide Information Technology Capital Reserve Fund with purchase, maintenance, and repair of all town departments, computer technology, hardware, and software, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be placed in said fund and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen as agents to expand without further appropriation. That amount to be taken from the unassigned fund balance as of December 31, 2015. Recommended unanimously by the Select Board and the Advisory Budget Committee. There are two notes. This past fall, administration authorized a survey and inventory of all computer, hardware, and software systems for all departments. And that inventory for mass replacement, recurge plan was devised in conjunction with town's IT vending. Funding these capital reserves to the capital reserve account will allow for level funding for IT needs from year to year and will allow for covering unexpected expenses of equipment failures without impacting borrowing operating charges.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Pontier, second. Now, seconded by Mr. Bartlett. Discussion. All right, seeing no one approaching the microphone, I'll ask for your vote on Article 12. All those in favor, show me your cards. Thank you very much. Show your cards. All those opposed, show your cards. And that is your now's vote. Okay, before we move to Article 13, I just want to find out from our supervisors how many people we have in line to check in. 11:15.
11:15.
What did I say?
11:15.
Mr. Moderator, you have the choice to leave it open longer than an hour.
No.
Okay, we began voting at 10 minutes past 10, and I said at that time we were closing voting at 11:15. And we will take the votes, the most votes that are checking in right now, and then the assistant moderators will begin the count. All right, there's the request that I ask you, what time would you like to close?
Now.
Okay, show me your cards if you're in favor of closing the ballot box and wants some people to check in.
Now.
Now.
He said 11:15.
There are people in line checking in. All right, seeing no one else checking in, the ballot box is closed for Article 2, and I'll ask my assistant moderators to begin the count, please. You're gonna just display them up here, one box on one side, one on the other, and again to sort the yeses and noes, and then once you've sorted them, you can count the piles of yeses and piles of noes. Yeah, just try to dump them out so we can... All right, this ballot box is empty if anyone wants to come look at it to a while or two. And again, the same story, inspections are accepted. 11:30. All right, all these gentlemen are counting. We'll move on to the next article. Yes, sir, I believe that's Article 13.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bart.
I move Article 13, which is to see if the town will vote to establish the State's Landing Improvement Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of funding improvements to the beach and park area and will raise and to raise an appropriate sum of $125,000 to be placed in said fund and further authorize the Board of Selectmen as agents to spend without further appropriation. Said amount is to be taken from the unassigned fund balance as of December 31, 2015. This was recommended by the Selectman 5 to 0 and recommended by the Advisory Budget Committee 5 to 0.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bartlett and a second from, second from Mr. Pontier.
I'd like to read the notes if I may.
Oh, sorry.
This new capital reserve fund will allow for the continued funding of capital improvements being considered for State's Landing Beach and Park over the next several years. Funds will be used for engineering, permitting, dredging, construction, parking, drainage, and some park amenities. Estimated total project cost is approximately $975,000. Funding this project through a capital reserve fund with the Select Board as agents to expend will allow to continue to work on this multi-phase project with access to funding as needed over the life of the project. And if I may make a comment or so?
Please.
Capital Reserve, or Capital Improvement Program Committee has looked at this. The attitude of the Capital Reserve Program Committee has been over the years that we take care of those things that we already own. And this is a major project to greatly improve the facility that we have now that we've kind of let go of. A lot of us remember when State's Landing Beach was a very popular spot and very useful spot, and we hope to return it as such. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any others in the room wish to make comments? All right, anyone approach the microphone with questions? All right, for Article 13, I'll take your vote in favor of Article 13 at this time. Show all cards, please. Thank you very much. Show your cards. Opposed? And we have a couple in opposition. All right, Article 14. Article 13 passes. Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 14 to see if the town will vote to amend Statement of Policy Number 23, Competitive Bidding Policy as follows. To increase the amount which the competitive bid policy will apply for the purchase of all goods and services and for the sale or disposal of municipal property from $5,000 to $15,000, and to increase the amount for purchases requiring three quotations from at least three vendors from $2,500 to $5,000. A full copy of the proposed amendment policy is available on the Board of Selectmen's page of the town's website at the public library and in the Selectmen's office. We also have a note on this article that says, "This amendment to the bidding policy is being proposed to bring the policy in line with increases in the cost of goods and services town purchases." The policy was last amended from $1,000 to $5,000 in 1991. Cost of many goods and services have increased more than tripled. So, the $5,000 limit is easily met. And therefore, it costs the town hundreds of dollars in staff time and advertising each year using the formal bid process. Martin Hesford continues to use best management practices for all purchases, less than $15,000, seeking to obtain the best possible prices for all purchases. For the same reason, increasing the sale or disposal of town property will allow the Select Board more opportunity to limit the cost of disposal and obtain the best possible price for the town.
Discussion. All right, thank you. All right, we have a second. So, a motion could second on the floor, Mr. Marder?
Yes, Joel, I just think $85 to be counted. Can the Selectmen tell us how many bids went out last year? Well, I can't believe we're gonna have a lot different. They, I mean, you bid this for equipment, correct, the road project. I just, my personal opinion is we stay where we are. We have plenty of help. We have people, we have secretaries and that. I don't see where it's gonna make that much difference to keep it. Since the Selectmen are saying they don't wanna micromanage and they don't wanna watch all the people shoulder, I don't think it's gonna do anyhow if somebody puts something out bid and we find out for sure with the price attack, rather than just call three people and say it's gonna be a price.
Mr. Moderator? Just wanna clarify one thing there. When this was brought to our attention to discuss raising the amounts, other towns were, they're asked what they do, and the consensus was that most towns have higher amounts than we did. Plus the fact that we have to bid something that costs us money to do that. So, when these amounts are... to do that, so when these amounts are relatively low, it doesn't make sense to put them out to do a competitive bid and put the advertising in and all of the stuff that goes with it.
Hi there, Mr. Wakefield.
Yes, sir.
And also, as you may remember, Joel, in many cases, when we go up for these small bids, we don't get as many bids as we want. People, some of the contractors just aren't going to go through the insurance, bond, you know, that such stuff for a small bid, and that had been the case in some cases, not all, but we saw this move as hopefully a way to get involved in the bidding process.
All right, thank you, sir. Next gentleman.
Yes, Jonathan Bardone.
All right, go ahead.
I would ask people to vote no on this. I think that $10,000 increase is a lot of money and that's too much, and I also feel that $2,500 is, and it's not very difficult to have three people to come and give you a vote on having a job. So at this time, I would ask that it's competitive, it's good for the town, for businesses in the area, that opportunity to put their numbers into jobs and work for organization like that. So please vote no.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Ledger.
Yes, $1,250 to go. If you believe that's the reason we're not getting bids because the bonds require that money, then change that harder. I still think hitting the price in the bidding process is the best way.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bruce Roberts. I live on Puff Drive. Just an old experience that I had early in my career, working with the parks department in Providence where I worked. We had a situation where we would put items such as seed fertilizer, bottom lots, things like that, out for bid, and would get no bids. And eventually, a local forest in Providence would take the advertisement for the bid and the bid package and would bid four or five times the amount that we could get the ministry before on just a straight purchase, and would submit that as a bid, and the city would have to purchase it from that supposedly low bidder. And at $2,500, that seems like a ridiculous amount to have to go out to bid to make.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Bartlett.
Thank you, Ryan, $1,550, Lake Shore Drive. I am going to be the chief financial officer for our local nonprofit, Fecchion, responsible for a $26 million budget. We do considerable amount of work on an annual basis with our board of directors and with our auditors to look at such policies. I would just like to say that our new highs when we vote yes on Article 14 will actually look like lows compared to best practices, so I am absolutely in support, and I'd like to call a vote.
All right, can anybody else can call the question? I say call and vote. I would agree with that. All of those in favor of calling the question, show your cards. Thank you, show your cards. Opposed? Okay, those that are in favor of Article 14 as red, show your cards. Thank you very much. Show your cards. Those opposed to Article 14? Article 14 passes. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 15 to see if the town will vote to amend Statement of Policy Number 4A, indemnification policy for town employees and officers, adopted as Article 49 of the 1997 Annual Town Meeting to assign the policy Number 4A, and the notice that this policy was never assigned in our heart.
Okay, moved by Mr. Schiff, seconded by Mr. Bartlett. Discussion. See you not. All those in favor of this article, show your cards. Very good, show your cards. Those opposed? Okay, that passed. All right, we're going to move down here and see how our counters are doing. All right, the vote for Article Number Two is completed and compiled, and if you folks can't, send all of those votes into one of those boxes for posterity or the future, whichever comes first. The vote was, those in favor was 220, those opposed 348. Article Two required a two-thirds of vote, and it did not make that. Article Two, favorite. Could the Supervisors give me a total number of people checked in at 573? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion and reconsider Article Number Two. Seconded.
No. No. No.
Do you have a motion?
Who do you work for? Who do you work for?
Quiet, please. Quiet, please, we'll have an opportunity to vote. We have a motion to reconsider Article Number Two, made by Mr. Schiff, seconded by Mr. Pontieri. Discussion, I'll go first to you, Mr. Schiff.
The reason I do that is because the Selectmen have really hoped today that this issue would be addressed with some finality. Part of that process...
It's there. It's there. It's there. It's there.
Yeah. In favor, please.
Part of that process was supposed to be debate, so we could hear from both sides of the issue. That did not happen here today. Certain people were allowed to speak, other people weren't. I also have an issue with the procedure of today, because I believe Celeste Burns came to the microphone and asked to hear our opinions. She was addressed. We were not allowed to finish answering our questions. And I also have a question whether or not a motion to call the question means a second or not, so for those reasons, I personally made the motion.
All right, any other discussion on the motion to reconsider? Yes, Mr. Bartlett.
Two things you need to know about a motion to reconsider. One is that if the motion to reconsider passes, then this town meeting continues in a minimum of seven days, right?
Uh, no, sir, that is not the case. That would be the case if there were a motion to restrict reconsideration that preceded that. It did not, so there was no motion.
So we can vote on this again this afternoon?
Correct.
Okay. I guess one of the questions I would ask of this legislative body is, I'd like to have a show of hands of anybody who didn't come in here with their mind already made up.
Okay. Yes, there you go. All right, you're going to have to, but I have a point or that I've got to determine where it came from. Where that point of order comes from.
I believe you have to deal with the initial request.
Uh, that is true, yes.
That's a problem.
That's true. If any else question? All right, all those in favor, please.
Richard Brown, 1718 Kers Road. I'd like to speak against the motion for reconsideration simply because I know a number of people came here today to vote against this item, and they've come to vote, and they've left. I suppose all the votes are due.
Yes, 1118 Cosworth Road. I agree with the previous speaker that, yes, a lot of people voted and then left. I also think that if there was an objection to people not being able to speak, that should be made much earlier.
You're right.
Ryan Lopes, 41 LeSueur Street.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lopes.
I think this is dirty politics. You do this out of greed. You don't do it out of anyone, so everybody has a chance to come back. Don't move after half the group left. That's the dirty politics.
Thank you.
I think the special gift, Bruce Roberts, 55, drive.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
If there was any dirty politics involved in here as the initial call to the question that called the debate. The idea that to show hands of who came here with their mind made up is ludicrous, because in debate in this particular forum, that is supposed to inform people on these subjects and therefore possibly change...